All right, welcome everyone. I call the January 20th, 2021 Commissioners Meeting to Order. Thank you for joining us today. We are once again joined by veteran Don Bradley, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Smith, who is going to lead us in the invocation.
Palatial agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Your heavenly Father, again, this board gathers today to render decisions which affect those who elected us to be, to serve as their public servants. Father, as always, we ask for your wisdom and guidance when rendering such decisions. Lord, we ask for your divine protection of our law enforcement, our firefighters, our EMS and EMA personnel, and we ask for protection of our first-line workers in the healthcare industry who are battling the pandemic, to keep all of us safe. And also, we ask for your protection of our armed forces as they continue to serve around the world for democracy. Let us have peace into this new year, moving forward, and prosperity for all. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we have a special guest with us today from the York County Library System. We're joined today by Karen Hostetter, who's a library manager up at our library in Redland.
Good morning.
Morning.
Can you hear me through my mask? Okay, wonderful. I am really, really happy to be here in person. This is a good sign. Our libraries have been closed, doing curbside only for some time now, and on Monday, we're going to actually open for browsing again, too. So, good sign, good sign. And I'm also happy to announce 2021 One Book One Community Read. This, I've tried to count the other books. I think this is our 18th book. So, the people now vote for the book, our readers vote. We used to have a selection committee that picked the book, and we changed that about 10 years ago and said, why don't we let, we'll pick finalists and then let the public pick the book. Well, this year's book is a very, very sweet book. It's a light read, and I think that our people chose that on purpose. They just needed something uplifting and fun to read. And it is called The Curious Charms of Arthur Pepper. The author is Freda Patrick. She lives in England. And the good news for us being, having to learn to do everything virtually, is that we're going to have the author because of being able to do it as a Zoom meeting. So she'll be here sometime in April. It gives people plenty of time to read the book. And we also have a virtual book discussion, so everybody can join in for that as well, and that's on March 8th. But the book was launched on January 2nd. They're out in all the libraries and some of our partner bookstores and other groups. So I have a copy for each of you, as usual, and I challenge you to read the book and start the conversation about the issues in the book. The fact that it's a light read doesn't mean that it doesn't talk about something. And Arthur Pepper is a widower, this is the one-year anniversary of his wife's death, and he's finally going through her things, and he's deciding to, you know, take them to the Goodwill store. And he finds a bracelet, and he never saw it before. And it's filled with all these charms, and he's fascinated with it. So here's this person who's done the same thing with the same person for all these years, and all of a sudden, all these new feelings come in. What was this about? Well, he ends up traveling all over the world to, with clues from the bracelet. So he's really, really expanded his, I'd say, his whole life, you know? So it's a good read. It's a pleasant read. And again, I challenge you all to read it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number, oh, you can read this at the end. At the end, yeah. You can give them to us now, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five on the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through H, as listed below.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Adult Probation Department and University of Cincinnati, Cincinnati, Ohio, to provide training for the probation staff on the Ohio Risk Assessment System, Risk and Needs Assessment Tool, for a total cost of $20,500.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and Background Solutions LLC to provide faster, more in-depth background investigations for potential new hired deputy sheriffs for a total cost of $2,325 annually.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Youth Development Center in Schuylkill County to house youth at the Youth Development Center at a rate of $375.60 per day for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Youth Development Center in Schuylkill County to house youth at the Youth Development Center at a rate of $375.60 per day for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine.
I'll make a motion to authorize a contract agreement between the County of York and Lancaster Housing Opportunity Partnerships, York Housing Opportunity Center, to assist in providing down payment and closing cost assistance for qualified first-time homebuyers for the York County Homebuyer Assistance Program for a period of one year, beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
I see Felicia here, and I know this is a program that's been going on for a while, but maybe if you could just explain some of the benefits and how people would contact somebody to find out their opportunities.
Sure. Good morning. The First-Time Homebuyer Assistance Program, as is mentioned in the motion, it's, up to $5,000 are available to people that are interested in buying their first home. They have to be income-qualified, and it can be a resident of either the city or the balance of the county. Sometimes our programs are county-focused, and sometimes they're just focused on the city. Residents can be from anywhere in the county. If they're interested in taking on that first-time responsibility of buying a home, they, as I mentioned, they can get up to $5,000 to help assist with down payment and closing costs. It's repayable. If they would ever sell the house, it would be repaid and go back into a revolving fund. There's a lot of times a requirement that people go through some homebuyer training to become qualified, and you can get those kinds of training programs through agencies like the Community Progress Council and others. If people are interested in participating in the first-time homebuyer program, they can either contact their realtor, they can contact the York Opportunity Center that's listed here. The program is administered by L-HOP, but we do have our own office down on Beaver Street, I believe it is. And you can also find more information on our website at www.ycpc.org.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 10.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Weatherization Program and the Energy Doctor to provide quality control inspections, services, on an as-needed basis for the York County Weatherization Program for the period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, and the rates are as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11.
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and Masonry Preservation Services, Inc., Bloomsburg, Pennsylvania, for Phase 1 rehabilitation of the east clock face and east window of the center dome on the administrative center at a cost of $95,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
I know Scott's here. We've talked about this before, and I guess the only question I have is you have Phase 1. Can you kind of interpret that and what may be needed in the future?
Good morning. Yes, this is an initial step. We actually noticed some time back that we had a leak into the, into the center dome. We engaged SGH, an architectural firm, and they came out and did some inspection, and did some more testing, and the, excuse me, the east-facing clock face and the window that's right below it are the two main culprits of that leak. This gets those fixed, and then we have started to budget money every year for this building, just for the domes, for inspection and maintenance and upkeep. It's something that we need to stay on top of, and we will do that going forward.
And I believe you're going to investigate some sort of preventive maintenance contract going forward.
That's correct, yes.
I mean, it's something, this building, I guess, I know it was renovated before I came here, but they did a really good job of renovations, and obviously, we've done some work on the dome, and we've lit the dome and things, so we obviously need to take care of any renovation need to be done.
It is, yeah. It's, it is a bright spot in downtown York, and they are beautiful, but they do need to be maintained, absolutely.
Thank you.
Discussion or questions for Scott? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 12.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract amendment between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Global Tel Link to provide telephone and tablet services and offender management system indemnification provisions and litigation support. The term of the contract amendment is five year, five additional years, commencing upon full execution of this amendment with two additional automatic one-year renewals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And this has been talked about at the prison board meetings, and I know with our prison board solicitor and our solicitor, Michelle, about this contract amendment, and I think that we've got a recommendation of the prison board, and I think it's a good idea to move forward with this.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 13.
I'll make a motion to approve a mutual aid and cooperation agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Office of Emergency Management and Adams, Cumberland, Dolphin, Franklin, Lancaster, Lebanon, Perry, Schuylkill, and York Counties to provide mutual aid to emergency assistance and preparation for the South Central Pennsylvania Task Force.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 14.
I'll make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and Whitmoyer, Mount Joy, Pennsylvania, for one 2021 F-150 four-by-two supercab pickup truck for use by the York County Mosquito Disease Control Department for a total cost of $28,700 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 15.
I'll make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and a 10-8 Emergency Vehicle Service, New Highland, Pennsylvania, for prisoner partition panel kits installed in two 2020 Chevrolet Express passenger vans for a total cost of $12,539.82 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 16.
I'll make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County 911 Communications Center and JG Contracting Company, Carnegie, Pennsylvania, for the replacement of coax and elliptical waveguide cables at the East Manchester Water Tank that were damaged by the York County, by the York Water Company's contractor at a cost of $46,965. This cost will subsequently be reimbursed by the contractor's insurance company.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 17.
I'll make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and Whitmoyer Auto Group, Mount Joy, Pennsylvania, for one 2021 Ford F-250 for use by the York County Parks Department for a total cost of $56,900 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 18.
I'll make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and Exper Butler, Pennsylvania, for an additional N1J Level 3 ballistic barrier with gap armor for $28,980 under a PA CoStarz contract. This item was in the 2021 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I was wrong, I know about this. What are we actually purchasing here?
These barriers, when the Sheriff's Office did additional risk assessments for the, during active shooter drills, and they assessed that there were some areas that needed to have additional barriers put in place. So there's some additional barriers that are going to be added to the floors and the doors in all three buildings, and they're also going to upfit two additional units that are in the courtrooms presently.
Further discussion?
Security upgrade.
It's a security upgrade, it's for protection. You know, it's NIJ Level 3 armor that protects the deputies and/or other personnel behind it in the event that there is an active shooter.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 19.
I'll make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and Vertex, Vertai Corporation, Columbus, Ohio, for replacement of the batteries in UPS 1 and UPS 2 at the Emergency Services Center at a cost not to exceed $30,484.69.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 20.
I'll make a motion to approve a bid solicitation between the County of York on behalf of the Sheriff's Office for one VOTI XR3D-60 and one VOTI XR3-D-7 X-ray machine.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 21.
Motion to award the joint fuel bid for the County of York and municipalities to the following vendors for municipalities, fuel types, and delivery methods for the period of February 1, 2021, through January 31st, 2023, as listed at the back of the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 22.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between PennDOT District 8-0 and the County of York for the detour plan required for the Bridge 258 Rehabilitation Project and authorize the signature of the President Commissioner.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 24.
Motion to approve the appointment of Carl Freeman of York to the South Central Workforce Development Board for a term effective January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 25.
Motion to confirm the appointment of Shen Kreiser, nuclear planner and trainer at the York County Office of Emergency Management Agency to the community advisory panel. The term shall commence immediately and continue until modified by the Board of Commissioners.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. For those of you watching that aren't aware, unit number 2 of TMI plant is going to be decommissioned, and they have asked that the commissioners appoint someone to a panel. For those of you that don't know Shen, Shen is a nuclear planner for the county, and she has been with us for over 10 years, and she works with municipalities, school districts, and organizations to respond to incidents at nuclear plants. She's also a state-certified radiological officer, so I think she will be a great appointment to this panel. Further discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 26.
Motion to approve the filing of a petition with the court to appoint special legal counsel to represent the County of York in various areas of law when necessary.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think, Michelle, this is just standard operating procedure to, have these approved?
Annually, we have the commissioners approve the list of specialized counsel related to any cases, litigation, or advice that the commissioners would need, and then it gets signed by, it gets signed by the commissioners, and then it gets filed with the court and approved by the president judge.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 27.
Motion to approve sub-recipient agreements on behalf of the Community Development Department of the York County Planning Commission, authorizing and directing the commissioners to execute the following agreements for activities included in the 2019 Continuum of Care Program funded through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Washington, D.C., as listed below.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Felicia, is there anything you wanted to share on this agenda item?
I want to first join you, and I want to...
Joanne, anything you want to share?
Good morning, commissioners.
The Continuum of Care Program is a federally funded program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It follows an annual application process, which the next application process will start soon, and it funds a variety of programs everywhere from permanent supportive housing for disabled adults, as well as the programs that you see listed here. The Bell Socialization Services operates a program called Next Door, and it helps people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness with obtaining and maintaining permanent housing. So the funding that you see here is scattered through different types of programs that provide basically rental assistance and supportive services to people that are homeless or at risk of homelessness, so they can maintain a home over the long period and provide them with the services to develop the skills to do so.
And these are federal funds that are, the amounts here are guaranteed for this year?
Correct. These are the federal funds that, and actually, the Continuum of Care Program is a little bit different in that it actually gets into each individual type of program and activity and specifies how much funds will be given to that specific activity. So we have the master agreements with HUD that provide this funding, and then to the county, and then the county enters into a sub-recipient agreement with either Bell Socialization or YWCA, in this case, for those specific amounts. And then they're spent over a year, and we work with them on making sure the programs are operated within the requirements of the Continuum of Care Program. And they've been operating this program for a number of years and have been very successful at using the funds and helping the maximum number of people they can.
Good.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 28.
Motion to approve a certification of funds on behalf of Ag Land Preservation Department to certify 2021 County of York funds totaling $1,266,181 for the execution of agricultural conservation easement purchases under the authority of the York County Agricultural Conservation Easement Purchase Program, consistent with public law, Act 43, agricultural area security law is amended.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, and I believe this is in order to entitle us to the match that we get from the state, which I believe we've been receiving since 1989.
Yes.
And more, maybe, this is a pretty big number, the $1 million, and where the funds come from, maybe explain to the public.
The majority of the funds come from the land preservation tax that the board enacted in prior years, and then a small portion of the funds, about $50,000 to $100,000, come from the interest on the rollback taxes for people that are withdrawing their properties from the Clean and Green Program. So the two amounts combined add up to the $1,266, and then that's matched by a significant dollar amount from the State Department of Agriculture.
Right, good.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 29.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-01, Appointing the President Commissioner as Designee for the Board of Commissioners for the Purpose of Executing Official Documents.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Michelle, what does the county code specify for this?
So the county code indicates that for, that it, that for, and it's specialized documents, so for professional documents, and I think we included anything official, but of course, official documents aren't defined in the county code, and we do often pass resolutions to allow the President Commissioner to sign other specific documents for specific agencies. So because we have permitted that in the past, we have prepared a resolution to allow the President Commissioner to sign only those official documents that have otherwise already been approved by the, by the commissioners at a public meeting.
So are you saying, then, that this would still continue to follow the county code as it's written? If we do this?
I believe that it does, and I believe it also follows our, our practice in the county.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No. This issue, if I can, this issue came up particularly with PennDOT, and you'll, you'll notice, Motion 22 included an authorization for the President Commissioner to sign, where PennDOT looks for one signature on a document, and then when they provided the document with one signature, they came back and asked for a resolution authorizing that one signature. So this will be a, that's a perfect example of, of one of the cases where this would apply.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 30.
Motion to approve the following tax refund registers authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds. The registers and totals are listed below.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 30.
Motion to approve the following tax refund registers authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds. The registers and totals are listed below.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 31.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of January 14th, 2021, totaling
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 32.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of January 20th, 2021, totaling
I'll second the motion.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 33. No executive sessions between our last two meetings. In regards to other business, we, again, the commissioners wanted to give an update to the community on the vaccines. For those of you that aren't aware, the Pennsylvania Department of Health is rolling out a phased approach when it comes to vaccinating our community. We are still in Phase 1A of Phase 1, which Phase 1A addresses our first responders and our healthcare providers. Yesterday... Yesterday, the Pennsylvania Department of Health modified its guidance around Phase 1A to also include individuals that are over 65 and individuals between the age of 16 and 64 who have certain medical conditions. Those medical conditions are outlined on the Center for Disease Control website. Both Wellspan and UPMC wanted to share with you today that they are both continuing to vaccinate those in Phase 1A. Should you have any questions regarding your eligibility to receive the vaccination 1A, we will have links to both of their websites on our county website. Both healthcare providers also have a portal where you can register. We will provide those links on our county website as well. And Wellspan has vaccinated over 20,000 individuals in that Phase 1A in our community, and UPMC, they're a little bit larger, cover a little bit more geographical area in the Commonwealth, and they have vaccinated over 60,000 residents. So we will continue to provide updates as we have them, so please check our county website for the most recent information out there. So with that, any other business?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve a contract extension between the county of York and Catapult Engineering, Inc., Dillsburg, Pennsylvania, for project management services for the rail trail broadband pilot project for the period of January 1, 2021 through March 31, 2021, at a cost not to exceed $20,000 per month.
I'll second that motion. Apologize, that wasn't on my agenda. Mark, maybe you just want to give a quick update on?
Yes, the rail trail project is continuing, the pilot project is continuing. When the contracts were originally left for that project, it was anticipated that it would be completed by December 31. Henkel and McCoy's contract is contracted, basically pull the fiber. We're working with Millennium, who's the provider of the materials, Catapult Engineering, Lit Communities, Widdelty that's providing the towers to provide the broadband signal, Chantel, who's providing the fiber communications and the internet service. And basically, Catapult was working as the project manager for the project, coordinating all those various contractors. Their contract also expired at December 31, but the project has been delayed, partially due to trying to come up with a contract for a section of the rail trail between Kingsmill Road and Indian Rock Dam Road, where the rail trail is still owned, or the railroad is still owned by GNW Railroad. The rest of the rail trail is, the line is actually owned by the county of York, so it was no problem getting on that section of the trail and accessing the fiber. The remaining piece has delayed the project, and it's fully anticipated that it would be completed in less than the three months' time, but this would provide for project management to coordinate all those different contractors, to basically finish up the pilot project that the county undertook as part of the CARES funding.
Further discussion?
Yes. Doug, do you have something to say?
Well, no, I was just saying, I know you brought this up, you know, we were in a meeting the other day, and I asked a question, and I know we put CARES funding towards this project. Broadband is a big, important project all throughout Pennsylvania for rural areas and urban areas that don't have access. And when we made that commitment, we knew that there was a timeline for the CARES money to be spent, and that ended December 30, I think, 2020. And I think realistically, you know, we were all hoping that it would all get finished, it wasn't. I think because of the railroads, we need their approval to do some work on that line, that it was held up. And to me, the investment we made, you know, I think we need to finish that initial project to make sure that there'll be a utilization of the project, and it will be accessible through Chantel or other people that are close to the railroad line. I know there's been talk about further expansion of the broadband project, which has not been determined. I know we have to, you know, commit some kind of an organization to make some recommendations, but when I asked the question, you know, I said, is this going to be it? Because this is general fund money now, we're not using CARES money to actually pay for this. And I think you said that it would complete the original project, you know, make it accessible, and so even though I don't like taking money out of general fund money to do a project that we thought was going to be taken care of in a year's time, it didn't get done, and I think this probably is a good expenditure of funds.
Right, unfortunately, this money was not budgeted as part of the 2021 budget.
Right.
But the county does have funds set aside in a contingency fund to pay for expenses similar to this.
Right.
Okay, with that being said, since the money was not budgeted, and I know CARES funding paid for this, and the project was supposed to be up and functional by December 31, okay, that's not the case. We didn't get the right away from the railway system for this yet. My suggestion would be that we table this until we have a meeting with all the parties involved to figure out where we go from here, and where we're going to get the money to pay for it, and what that cost is going to be moving forward, and then we can come back and vote on that. If it's only another month, it's not a big deal, in my opinion. We can pick up where we left off at this point, there's no harm and no foul.
I mean, I'm personally fine with making this commitment, and then, as you said, moving forward to bring people together to make some decisions, because I'm certainly not an expert on broadband expansion and utilization, but, you know, I think time-wise, with the railroad company and stuff, that I think we probably need to get the negotiations settled fairly quickly to end the project, so.
The only problem, Doug, I have with that is if this takes another three or four months or five months just to get the settlement in the railroad, we're paying up to $20,000 a month.
Right.
Of general fund money with nothing getting accomplished at that point.
Right.
That's what my concern is, moving forward.
Right.
All I'm saying is, if we can just postpone this till we meet with all the parties, and I believe there's supposed to be a meeting next week, if I recall correctly, is that right, Julie?
Yeah, we're trying to set it up for this week, yeah.
Set it up for this week. Once we get that and we know where we're headed, I don't, look, I'm not against the project.
Right, right.
I just want to make sure that we have our ducks in our own, we understand what this means moving forward, and I'm not sure that, to me, it's prudent to wait a little while till we figure this out and then proceed forward, so.
I think that we will only be billed for any services that they render. This isn't an ongoing daily rate-type thing, correct?
No.
And my understanding is that we're, the ball is in our court now to supply insurance information to the railroad.
Correct.
And do we have any indication from the railroad that they're not going to?
No, there's issues with the railroad, they've, they supplied us with a contract asking for all new insurance information, or had provided new insurance requirements. The locations that they included in the contract referred to a subdivision in Manchester Township, not the location where we actually want to do the work. So that's been sent back, they need to make some corrections to the contract before we can move forward.
So in your best estimate, knowing what you know, certainly understanding that things change, do you, what do you anticipate as a timeframe to complete this?
I would anticipate probably within the next two months.
I mean, I'm ready to move forward, too, so if you would like to take a roll call vote, we can do that.
You can call, you can just do your normal roll call.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Any other business? I'll open it up for public comment. Hearing none, if I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and moving on to Salary Board.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements, where I set forth a New York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments with no additional benefits or concessions, unless otherwise noted, as stated in the Internal Salary Board detail, Department 26 Drug and Alcohol, Department 40 Children, Youth and Families, Department 61 Court Administration, Department 66 DJ Office Staff and Row Officer, Department 12 Controller.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will move on to the Retirement Board. I think we have a motion up, Greg.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on December 16, 2020, as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number three.
Make a motion to include the following vested individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Donna R. Rohrbach, Domestic Relations, Robin Asens, Prison.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item number four.
Make a motion to include the following individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Michelle P. Hovis, Human Services.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any executive sessions, Greg?
No executive sessions until last time.
All right, I'll open it up for public comment.
And Greg, I'd only ask one question. I know we postponed one of our updates, has that been rescheduled, or what's the status?
Yes, that will be, the third and the fourth quarter review will be March 3 meeting.
Okay.
March, yes, March 3 meeting.
And they are coming?
They're coming here.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other comment? All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for watching, and remember to wear your mask, watch your distance, and wash your hands. So thank you.